Okay, if we can get started with item nine. The second reading of an ordinance repealing ordinance number 006 regarding adoption of Robert's Rules of Order and amending chapter 2.08 of the Cupertino Municipal Code accordingly. So, are there, there's no comment cards on this?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, I don't think there's any discussion by council, is there?
Can we conduct the second reading of the ordinance, please?
Yes.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 20-2196, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino repealing ordinance number 006 regarding adoption of Robert's Rules of Order and amending chapter 2.08 of the Cupertino Municipal Code accordingly.
I would like to move that ordinance number 20-2196 be read by title only and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof.
Second.
Okay, vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
I move that ordinance number 20-2196 be enacted.
Second.
The motion carries unanimously.
And I have a very brief follow-up question. Now that we've repealed Robert's Rules of Order and whatever year of the, like the 1955 version of it, when do we enact Rosenberg's Rules of Order as the operative rules of order for the City of Cupertino?
That has already been done.
Okay.
By resolution.
Okay. And so we, okay, we've substituted a municipal code for a resolution, but there's no lesser effect with regard to the resolutions.
That's correct. That's correct.
Excellent.
It's still binding.
Thank you.
I understand we will have a study session on this, or what's the plan?
Yes, we're, as part of the mandatory trainings on open government and ethics, we're including an overview of parliamentary procedure, Rosenberg's rules, and we can also have a staff presentation to council at some point in the near future.
Okay, wonderful. We are on to item 10. This is relative to Recology Cupertino's franchise agreement with the City of Cupertino. It's the termination of the residential on-call curbside household hazardous waste program and the termination of the collection of the household hazardous waste fee with the refund of the fees collected since January 2019 and establishment of an annual assessment of costs against Recology in an annual not-to-exceed amount of $93,535 and authorization of Recology's request for a special maximum rate adjustment of additional $224 per month for residential customers in single-family homes and a rate increase of 3.93% for all other categories of service recipients to cover the increased cost of mixed recycling processing as a result of the disruption and volatility of overseas recyclable, recycling commodity markets for the period of October 2018 through January 31, 2021, with the maximum rate adjustment effective beginning January 1, 2020, and authorization to execute the franchise agreement amendment for the same. So is there a staff report on this?
Yes, there is. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. For this agenda item, myself and Ursula Sorova, who I'd like to introduce her as our new environmental programs manager, she's going to be assisting with this presentation, and we'll be talking about two items that are provided for in the solid waste franchise agreement that we have with Recology Cupertino. And the first item that Ursula will cover is the termination of the curbside household hazardous waste collection service and credit of collected funds from Recology back to residents. The second item is a proposed rate increase to cover actual costs of Recology Cupertino's proposed rate increase or to process recyclables in a changing recyclable market. At the end of the presentation, Ursula will have a slide that compares our rates to other cities in our area. While any rate increase is significant, and one of the things I wanted you to keep in mind throughout this presentation, that if this rate is authorized this evening, residents will continue to enjoy the lowest rates in the region regardless of what is the outcome this evening. So with that said, Ursula is going to begin her presentation, but I also want to note that we have John Zarelli from Recology Cupertino. He's also joined with Suzanne Morrison and Melinda Harris are in the audience as well. So with that, Ursula, if you would go ahead and start.
Yes.
Alrighty. Thank you, Mayor, council members. So our first item is changes to the household hazardous waste collection program. In our current franchise agreement, we have this door-to-door collection program, and as a reminder, we're not allowed to throw away household hazardous waste, so we do need a safe and, you know, acceptable way to get rid of it. So we had this unique program where we could have household hazardous waste picked up right at our door, and that was through a subcontractor of Recology. This was paid for by 56%, sorry, 56 cents per month per single-family dwelling. And for items that couldn't be picked up by the door-to-door program, or if there was a time-sensitive situation, we could also make use of the county HHW program. That's basically what everyone else had to use full-time, but we could use it in special cases. And that program is paid for out of fees levied on, or fees collected on every ton of waste that goes to landfill. And then the county reconciles every year how many, how many fees were collected versus how many cars from your city participated in their program. In December of 2018, I remember Rod Singh saying, "Boy, I'm having trouble getting appointment for this household hazardous waste thing," you know, pickup, and that was a red flag that the program was having problems, and sure enough, in January, Recology let us know that their contractor was no longer able to provide the program, and there was not a replacement program available. The HHW fee continued to be billed pending formal change to the agreement. So the changes we need to see in the agreement are the removal of this provision for this door-to-door program that's no longer available, to stop the billing of the HHW fee, and to credit back the fees billed thus far since January 1 of 2019. Additionally, we wanted to make the city whole, in a sense, I mean, long story short, we used to have a convenient door-to-door pickup program, plus we would get a refund from the county because we weren't using it up to as much as we had been before, and we, so we'd get a refund back. Now we have no door-to-door program, we're going to have to pay the county beyond that refund, and we won't get the refund anymore. So we made an agreement, we came to an agreement of how to, how to be made whole on that. Just in case you're wondering, this is how to participate in the county's program. They have a website, you can go make your own appointment, you can also call, the friendly staff will help you make an appointment. They have a permanent location that's available weekly, as well as drop-off locations that pop up around the county if that's more convenient to folks. And there are ones that pop up in Santa Clara, Mountain View, for example. Our second item is Recology's request for a rate increase in response to the recycling Recology requested a special maximum rate adjustment, which is allowed for in the agreement, and this is due to the disrupted recycling markets. I'm pretty sure you're all aware of that situation. Commodities used to be able to be sold by Recology to green waste recovery, and so they would earn revenue at that, and that helped keep the rates lower. Now, thanks to China's national sword policies, the markets are disrupted, and instead of getting revenue from this, you know, the sale of those materials, they're now having to pay for extra processing to get them up to, to have them meet the stricter requirements by the, by the markets. So we, we reviewed that request, we hired a consultant to help us really delve in and review that request. Basically, things checked out, we reached an agreement on what the actual costs had been and how to recover those costs. And the, the costs are amortized out through the end of our current agreement, which is basically in a year, January 31, 2021. So the rate increase comes out like this, $2.24 per single-family customer per month and a $3, 3.93% increase for other service categories. And then I think Roger was going to speak more to this point.
So how, how these costs would be equitably distributed amongst all the different service recipients was, was important to staff. So what we, what we looked at was, we know what the costs that Recology was requesting, and it's all due, it's all on the recyclable commodity market, so think your blue can. We know how much weight is being generated in those recyclables for residential and for, you know, commercial and multifamily. And so what we did is we, we just proportioned how much was being attributed to residential, how much was being attributed to the other service recipients, and came up with, with the fees that you see and the rates you see here. It may not be intuitive, but most of our recyclable weight is generated from residential properties. I mean, we have 16,000 parcels in the city, and we've got about 420, 430 commercial, you know, properties, including multifamily. And so, you know, a big share of the recyclable weights is residential, and so that's, that's one of the reasons why, you know, the dollar amount is what it is, and the rate increase for commercial is what it is. So we did, we did do that in an equitable way. And one of the things to point out, and it was in the recommended actions, is that this is retroactive to January 1 of 2020. The, the way that Recology bills is they bill every quarter, as, as you would know, on residential, and so that customers are going to be getting a bill at the end of February for the time period of January, February, and then March. So it does go back to January 1, and it's the same thing for, for commercial as well.
This is a slide just to show a comparison to our nearby cities. The yellow is our current rate, the orange would be our adjusted rate, and as you can see, we're, we're still very low in the region. Campbell is actually going up shortly, so they're going to leap back over us again. So this is residential, and this is commercial. And that's the last slide.
Yeah, and another thing to point out is, you know, we do enjoy these low rates, but we also enjoy, you know, really a high level of service compared to other agencies. So we're in a really an enviable position to where we have high service and low cost right now. And that's not changing with this proposed recommended increase. But any questions you'd have, we'd be happy to answer.
So do these rates, have all the companies in these other cities already passed increases for the recycling costs?
I wouldn't say that all of them have. I know, like, Santa Clara, they did about a year ago, and we were surprised that, they call it a tariff, but it's the same effective amount, but it's, it was a 46% increase because of this on recyclable. They actually charge for the blue container, but anyway, there's, there's many cities that have increased their rates because of this issue.
Okay. Well, before we go back to council, I have one card here from Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy. And if anyone else wants to speak on this, please submit a request.
Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Pauls, council members and staff, I want to thank Mr. Lee, Director Lee, for explaining why, to bring people who don't know, I sent email to the council and staff regarding this increase on single-family homes, because when I take the $2.24 and compare to what we have to pay right now, it was an 8% increase. And in November, we had a 3.9% increase, so we're looking at 11.9% increase all of a sudden. And you look at the amount and you think, well, that's not a lot, but you also added a water fee, parcel taxes, bond measures, these things start to add up. And so although I don't like it, and I'm telling you I don't like it, what I'm asking you guys to do is when you look at things, whatever the service is, whatever the feature is, I don't want more. I want you to keep the cost down. I want you to look at things and don't pick the best, you know, the biggest bang for your buck because it costs more and it's got pizzazz. I want the service to be done and keep the cost down within reason. It doesn't have to be fancy. So when you're looking at all these fees, please do that first. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Peggy. And I don't believe the city has passed any bond measures or parcel taxes, have we?
Not, not that I'm aware of recently.
Not since I've been around.
But we are still paying for the bond for the library.
Right, exactly. But, but I agree with Peggy that, you know, we are stewards of the taxpayers' money, and we have to be, be frugal with it. Okay, so let's bring this back to council, if anyone has comments on it. Let's start with John this time.
So, it, it sounds fair. It, I, I'm happy to, to pay for services rendered. I definitely like what the resident said, let's not add bells and whistles. So now, the question that comes back is, this second increase since November is attributed to this exchange with, with China, and so we see things go up. What happens if it then reverts back and they're able to charge rather than pay? Is the correct charge to the residents verified each year, adjusted each year based on the conditions of that year? It's very easy for things to always go up and never come down, and that would be my concern. Well, they had the 3%, now 8%, and then if there's a change, you know, all this exchange going on and something else passes and, and rates or their, their advantage gets reinstated, are we going to see that? How do we ensure that we're going to be on top of that to correct it if need be?
That's a very responsible question. Now, the, the other increase that you referenced, was it 3.9? That was our, our annual, the franchise agreement allows an annual consumer price index increase, so that, that's what that was. It wasn't relative to this, just, just so that they are separate. We would, because, through this, what we've done is we've, it's proposed to make Recology just to cover their costs. If, if we see that things are changing to where their costs are being reduced, we certainly have within our discretion in the existing agreement to audit the books and, and redetermine what the, what the new costs are. And, and then it would just work backwards, so we would request of Recology that this needs to be considered, and we would, we would then do the things in opposite. That's not how it's been trending, but that's, that is how it would work.
As long as we know that.
Yeah.
Hey, Darcy.
When does the current agreement with Recology end?
Yeah, that's a good point, too, because it's, it's January of next year, so there's not a whole lot of time in which things would trend up or down, but it is a fairly short timeframe.
Okay. Other question, with regard to the household hazardous wastes, is there something that we can do to outreach to our residents to know, to let them know with clarity, this is what you need to be doing in order to, you know, because you're not able to put it on the curb anymore, in order to, you know, dispose of your wastes?
You know, we're, we're using the different social media things that we have available to us to let residents know, and I was just talking with Mr. Zarelli about this, when, when residents get their quarterly bill at the end of next month, that we're going to have an insert in that that's very clear as to, you know, why you're getting this credit back for the year, and then how to, how to get a hold of the county program so you can participate in that.
Right. So, I, I mean, it seems to me that an educational component would be pretty useful as well. I think that the, the, the seminar that our sustainability department put on, I think it was for neighborhood block leaders, but it was a really good presentation with regard to what's recyclable, what's not, in Cupertino. Good information, you know, breaking down, you know, the various waste flows. But I think that a lot of what's happened with regard to our current inability to sell as much of our recyclable products is the fact that there were a lot of people that weren't really recycling properly, they weren't separating out, you know, the non-recyclable stuff.
Contamination.
Exactly, contamination. I mean, even organic contamination. And so, I mean, one of the phrases that was kind of bandied about at the time was, well, you know, China doesn't want our trash, right? I mean, it's one of these, you know, if, if we could have more of an educational, you know, kind of, you know, component to what we do, I think there could be a much greater likelihood that in the future it becomes more of a, a true commodity, as opposed to something where, you know, if we're buying it for X number of, you know, cents a pound, I mean, if it, if it takes us, you know, 2X, you know, or we're causing that to, you know, happen, then, you know, I guess it really doesn't make that much economic sense. But we can educate. And if we're outreach-ing and letting our residents know, this is how they, you know, dispose of household hazardous wastes, I was thinking the scene, you know, and I, I think those outreach efforts, you know, especially in things like our block leader programs are great. You know, something that's televised, we, we have the city channel that's available, we have, you know, the city website available, just something that could be a deliverable, even if it's on a written medium on an ongoing basis, I think, you know, it could bode really well for the, you know, future long-term prospects, you know, just kind of crowdsourcing the, the effort here. So, so that's my request, you know, especially for the household hazardous waste, because, you know, at the end of the day, the city's getting the money, but now the residents are being asked to basically, you know, take their household hazardous wastes to a county center, right?
It's not nearly as convenient as it was.
It's not, not at all, not at all. So, you know, I wish it could come back, I mean, you know, but I would assume that if it were exploring, if it were worth exploring the possibility of perhaps Recology finding a different subcontractor, that the city would have already explored that.
Yeah, I mean, this issue first came up about in March or so of last year, and we spent quite a bit of time, Recology did, to try to find someone else to do it, and it just wasn't, didn't work out. But those are all outstanding suggestions, Councilman Paul. One of the things I just wanted to mention is that our, 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 our single-family homes do, do a pretty decent job of segregating out recyclables from green waste, from trash. We've, we've done waste characterization studies, you know, flip lids, empty carts, and really have a good, a good idea of where a lot of that education needs to be. And while it's always a good reminder for residents to, to do the proper thing, a lot of our efforts are on the other, like the commercial, the food, a lot of the food businesses. We spend a lot of time making sure we educate them, there's a lot of turnover in employees, and it's, it's a, it's a constant effort to keep on top of that.
Yeah. So I, I guess at this point, we're really at the outreach stage and making sure that we make it easier for our residents to, you know, to know, and similar to the voting, you know, we're getting fewer places to go, and, but the outreach there seems to be pretty good. And so if we could work the city website as well as the, the scene, any other mechanisms you can think of, I think that would be a pretty, I, I know we do our, you know, city managers' update, too. I am blanking on the name of this document. What is that you send out every two weeks?
Items of interest.
The items of interest, yes. And, and I thank you, Deb, for making that really more overtly a public document. I think that's probably, it's probably of interest to our city to let them know. So, thanks very much for your efforts here.
You're welcome. You know, one thing to note is the county program, it's, it's about every month, there's a location that rotates around, around the, the county. And so, you know, I think getting that up frequently so people know where the next one is, and then there's also a static site in San Jose that's there all the time.
Oh, good.
Just making sure, and that's the kind of information that we'll make sure it gets out in that insert.
Wow, big county. Are, are we in the rotation anywhere on an annual basis?
We don't have a site.
We don't have a site. We, we looked for a site, actually, that was part of our exploratory process, was trying to find someplace in Cupertino or very nearby that might work as a county location to pop up at, and we couldn't find one that would work out.
Well, since we, since we're on the topic, where's the San Jose site located, so that anybody who...
It's on Las Plumas in, in San Jose. And I, I can say I've used that program, and they run a very tight ship, that they're by appointment, you drive through, I've never had to wait more than five minutes, so they've got it down to a science, and they take everything. I mean, we used to use them because people would say, "Well, I have flares," or "I have something in an unmarked jar that I found in the garage, and it smells bad, and I don't know what it is." The county will take that, you know? So they're, they're actually a really great, well-run service.
All right. So, but when you say "we," you mean your household, not the city used to use it? Because I just wonder whether anyone has approached the city and said, "I have this," and perhaps have we been acting as a conduit for that kind of disposal in the past?
We, no, we just let them know where to, where to take the materials.
There's nobody in the city that says, "Okay, well..."
No, we don't take receipt of it.
That's probably a good thing, I'd imagine. All right. Thanks very much.
Okay. So, motor oil, is that still collected by Recology? That was not part of household hazardous waste, was it?
It's still collected curbside if you package it properly.
Right, right. And what about batteries?
Also, still collected.
Okay.
Ziploc bag.
Right, right.
Tight containment there, yeah.
I think I'm the only person in Cupertino that still changes my own oil, so there's probably not a lot of that collected. So, I know in San Francisco, and I think Recology is the provider there, they do have garbage police that check your recycling bins. So I know on my street and in my bin, my neighbor is always putting things in that are wrong. I don't know how to stop that other than like drilling a hole and putting a padlock on it or something. But it is a shame that, you know, part of this rate increase may be due to the fact that people are not properly putting things into the blue bin. There's also the issue of the food containers, is, you know, with the cost of water, how much do you want to, how much water do you want to spend washing your food container so there's no, you know, residue on it, so it doesn't get kicked out?
I think 80% would just be empty, really. If we could just achieve empty, we'd be really making some progress.
Okay. And then, for the new contract, when it comes up with Recology or whoever, I hope there's something in there that does what John kind of said, that it, it can adjust, you know, up or down based on what the market is for the recyclable materials, because I think that wasn't ever dreamed about in the last contract. Okay, and that's all I have. Liang?
So, yeah, I'm actually not familiar with this topic. I have to look up what's household hazardous waste that includes paint, poor chemicals, pesticides, household cleaning solvent. And so it doesn't include auto-oil. And so, right now, then residents can only contact the county or find, drive to a county site. Then in case people just dump it in the trash, what happens then? That will increase our cost, or, or it's just an environmental hazard?
It would do all of that, and, you know, we would hope that we would find that. I mean, it can cause quite a bit of a, it, it, that can be a dangerous condition, you put certain things into the, into the refuse truck and catch on fire, so...
It could be just a bottle of this paint that's sealed, but it's thrown in the trash. I suppose that happens quite...
Yeah, no, it likely does.
And then they will just go into the, the dump, right?
If it's, if it's put into the black container, that's right. If it's put into the blue container, then that, that is getting processed, so... If it's put into the blue container, then that is getting processed. So...
So, if it's put in the blue container, Recology would take it out to...
If it's still intact, then it's going to get retrieved, yes.
And, but that will increase our cost. They will, it will increase the cost of processing?
It does. I mean, it goes to green waste recycling with who Recology has an agreement with, not with us. And so, it just, that increases the contamination rate of what is going to that facility, which in turn would, you know, could increase the costs of Recology taking it there and increase costs.
So, contamination rate increase, they will increase the cost? Okay. So, more education would help the whole city reduce the cost?
Absolutely.
And how are commercial properties handling the hazardous waste?
Well, they have, it's a cost of doing business to responsibly dispose of your hazardous waste as a business. So, the county program actually does offer a low-cost alternative for small quantity generators. And then, if you're a larger generator, you're going to have to contract with some kind of service to help you responsibly remove that.
But, commercial people might have a lot of this hazardous waste, chemical, paint, all these things. And they could also throw it in the blue bin that they are using.
And that would be, that would be illegal, but yeah.
And, but then they, where do they go to dispose of this hazardous waste?
So, they would have to contract for service with a service provider.
They have to pay for a service provider? If they don't pay, they actually pay $0 and just dump it somewhere? There is no control on that, although it's illegal?
There's different inspections that occur that would prevent that from happening.
Okay. So, then, in terms of the recycle, for the second item, so I see that there is a 2.25 per month charge for single-family homes. But then, the multifamily homes are lumped together with commercial properties with 3.93%. But my understanding is there are more residential property generate more recycled products, which include multifamily residential, especially when we have a lot more multifamily residential units. Why are they charged a lower rate as the commercial property, which generate smaller amount of recycle?
Multifamily for us is five units and more. So, this residential rate is anything up to, you know, up to four units is getting that 2.24 charge. Anything over that is the 3.93%.
Okay. So, it's 2.24 is not single-family homes, it's...
That is single-family homes.
You said it's up to three units?
Yeah. Single-family homes goes up to four units. At five units, it's multifamily.
The single-family home here, you refers to include fourplex?
Yeah, that's correct. When it gets to five units and more, it's the 3.93%.
Okay. So, five point or more, we are charging less for the residential? We are charging the same rate as the commercial, even the residential generated this more recycled?
Well, it's, yeah, but it's still per unit within that multifamily complex.
But you are charging a percentage, not per unit?
No, each, each unit pays the garbage collection fees. It's not one fee for all four units together.
I think when I asked you earlier, you mentioned that we do charge more for residential because the next study shows residential properties generate more recycled waste. And we do charge less for commercial properties because they generated less recycled product. And, but I, well, for commercial, I think it really depends on what kind of business. However, multifamily residential is residential also. Supposedly, they generate the same amount as single-family, two-unit or fourplex. Why are they multifamily units, five units or more, being charged the same amount as commercial? That's my question. Residents were concerned about being fair, so that's why.
Yeah. You know, I mean, it was based on where we saw the recyclables and the weights being generated. So, I mean, that's really my best answer to that. We just looked at where the weights were and to charge accordingly. You know, I agree that some service recipients tend to generate more recyclable goods than others, but on average, that's how this number came to be.
So, what I mean, so when this number is calculated, you didn't distinguish between multifamily units, five units or more versus commercial?
We took it into consideration, but it was all averaged together. So, yes.
Right. So, it's considered commercial if it's five units or more?
It, you know, and you can see the different rate schedules that are part of exhibit B.
Well, in any case, that's, you know, we can look at that again when we do the next garbage contract.
So, they are charged per unit?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, the businesses are charged per business?
Per business.
And also depending on the size of their, the bin they request?
Yeah, there's a long service list that we provide.
Okay. So, regarding Peggy's point that we shouldn't do a lot of bills and whistles that we don't need. And, but you also mentioned that, yeah, we provide a lot of services. So, what services we do provide? Are there any non-essential services that we could consider cutting down in the future to cut down cost?
I'm sure that there are. Is there any that come to your mind right now, Ursula?
Well, I'm thinking the services provided are things like that motor oil pickup, you know, that you can put it out at the curb, your bulky item collections that you can do two of a year that are part of your service. You know, they pick up your Christmas tree, they'll, you know, there are services like that that are rolled in.
Yeah, shredding event, free compost.
I mean, that's not what we're considering here today, though. You know, if we want to investigate this when we do the next garbage contract with Recology or whoever, then we could look at that. But that's not, we don't need to spend time on that here tonight.
Next time, let's look at all the different services and then evaluate how much we are using them? Do we really need them? Or maybe the county is providing some service?
Yeah, thank you.
I did have one question regarding ADUs. So, is an ADU charged a separate collection fee or is that part of the primary household? Primary residence?
This came up actually not that long ago. I was asked about this and I reached out and if they do have a separate address, they have their own service.
Right. But an ADU that's like in a garage, that would not have a separate address. So...
So, then it would just be part of the one single-family home.
Okay, yeah. Rod?
Thank you very much. So, I've recently had a chance to tour ZWEN. And in the past, I, so ZWEN is the facility which takes commercial waste from San Jose commercial accounts and turns it supposedly into very high-grade organic compost for agriculture and so forth. And by most, all accounts, it's failing. It's unable to do a good job because frankly, the waste stream is contaminated. Maybe this is a little off point, but I know with the tainted stuff, the percentage of taintedness, or whatever you say, it has to be so very small in order for any plastic, for example, to go. In this case, it's just compost that's laden with plastic and they try to separate it out. The process is also inefficient. On these commercial accounts, and maybe we have to call John Zarelli up, but these commercial accounts, I wonder what we are doing differently than Republic. When I go down to the, our composting, that is where Cupertino does this up in the hills above Gilroy, I see a rather clean compost. And I wonder if you might comment, John or Ursula, on how it is that we're doing seemingly a much better job in controlling what goes into that compost stream?
I believe that the compost that we give away up at the compost site is generated from where our residential yard trimmings and organics go. So, the commercial stuff goes somewhere else. And that's not where our compost comes from that we give away.
Well, I was specifically referring to the commercial hauling that we do in...
Yeah, that was in South Gilroy.
South Gilroy.
Yeah, we went down there years ago.
Down there years ago. And I saw something much different recently when I went up.
That's right. And that still looks that way today. And what's changed since we were down there, Rod, is it used to be that residential and commercial organics went down there. Now, only residential does. That was a decision by Recology. All of our commercial goes up to Vernalis, which is up in the Tracy, it's up in the Central Valley.
I wonder if John could come up and help us with this as a, yeah, as the expert.
I've been to that site too and it looks similar to what you saw.
Okay, welcome, John.
Not to put you on the spot, but briefly explain that.
Good evening, Mayor Sharp, members of council, John Zarelli, general manager of Recology. Our commercial organics program, we believe is a much cleaner product than some of the other cities. We have a full-time waste zero specialist, Suzanne Morrison, who's here. I think the other big impact in Cupertino is you have businesses that want to do the right thing. You have a couple of major players, one being Apple, very environmental responsibility. So, we work with them very closely to keep the contamination very low.
Do you, I mean, presumably, there are well-meaning businesses in San Jose too. Is it a function of you going and looking at what you're taking in? And being more scrutineering, I mean, looking through it and saying, hey, sometimes, sorry, but you need to do better with this?
Yeah, we have one commercial food waste route and he's very responsible. He works with Suzanne on a daily basis. When he's dumping containers, we have a hopper camera. He can see what's going in there. We also, you know, process our own material. So, when we dump it on the floor, our transfer station, we have a spotter who can see the contamination, what business it's going from. And then, we'll send Suzanne out and work with the customer to clean up the material.
Yeah. So, I'm very appreciative of that. And the subcontractor you were using for this household hazardous waste program, and yes, the thing I was trying to get rid of a few months ago was a, happened to be a fire, a smoke detector, right, in my house, which is radioactive. So, you're not just supposed to fling them in the garbage. It took a lot of time before I got frustrated. I won't say what I did with it. Okay. Can you comment on who you were using for this and what precipitated this change so you no longer have an option here?
The company was WM Curbside. We've been using since 2010. And December of 18, they were not able to get their permits for their facility in Hayward. And we work with the City Hayward and the Cooper inspectors. And long story short, we work with the City Cupertino. They were unable to get their permits to continue to operate. So...
Can you tell us, while you're here, a little bit about, I mean, we all want to pay as little as possible and I get that, but I know from my service on the County Recycling and Waste Reduction Commission that the state has ambitious and ever higher bars to reach in terms of, in terms of keeping things out of the landfill. Can you talk about the challenges in meeting all the state mandates?
I think 1383, which is the new state mandate coming up, is going to be a requirement of every commercial business, every multifamily, to have mandatory organics service and recycling service, which in Cupertino, they've passed ordinances a year in advance that we're ahead of the curve. And Suzanne and the operations team pretty much have these programs in place already in the multifamily and commercial businesses.
And can you explain why our rates are for the 32-gallon size are about as low as, well, and soon they'll be as low as any, anybody, any of our peers? Do we just negotiate with you better, John, or...?
That's part of it. And the other part is, you know, it's been a CPI contract for the last 10 years and the CPI increases have not kept up with the cost of, you know, business going up proportionally.
Well, okay, I'll finish this, but I thank you for what we've been able to accomplish together on my tenure on the council. You know, you are a employee-run business, I believe, right? And you seem to have a lot of folks with a lot of hearts. So, thank you.
It's been a pleasure and we look forward to continuing business with Cupertino.
All right. Thank you, John. Okay. So, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 20-013 to authorize the city manager to execute the Third Amendment to the franchise agreement with Recology Cupertino, implementing the above, which I have already read.
I'll second that. Can we vote?
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. We are on to tobacco. So, this is item 11, the First Reading Municipal Code Amendment to the Cupertino Municipal Code, repealing and replacing the Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 5.50 of Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, adopting new policies to regulate the sale of tobacco, such as prohibiting the sale or distribution of electronic cigarette products, extending the look-back period for permit suspensions from 24 months to 60 months, requiring minimum age for individuals selling tobacco products, and amending the administrative appeal process for permit violations. So, we can have the, can we have the staff report?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Katie Nomura, Assistant to the City Manager. And I have with me Leslie Zellers, a consultant from the county that is helping with this project.
Good evening. Good evening. Glad to be back. I was here last on November 5. It was a busy day for local and state government. It was Election Day. And on that day, the Cupertino City Council adopted an ordinance to regulate the sale of tobacco products, including banning the sale of flavored tobacco and requiring a license to sell tobacco products. And at that time, council asked the staff to come back with potential amendments to broaden the ordinance to prohibit the sale of all e-cigarettes entirely. Because on that same day, Santa Clara County expanded their ordinance to prohibit the sale of e-cigarettes. And so, that was something that the city staff didn't have time to incorporate into the ordinance because it was being heard that same night. So, just to refresh your memory, tobacco remains the number-one preventable cause of death and disease in the country, including in Santa Clara County. And the Healthy Cities Program with the County Health Department has a series of evidence-based strategies that they're recommending to all cities. Cupertino is partnering with the county. They received a grant and technical assistance to adopt some of these policies and that's the reason that the staff have brought forward these different amendments for you to consider. One in eight deaths in Santa Clara County is still due to tobacco use and smoking. And among youth, one in 10 youth are using tobacco, including e-cigarettes. We're seeing a marked decline in tobacco smoking use among youth and a marked increase at the same time in e-cigarette use. And teens are highly susceptible to using these new products. And teens are highly susceptible to using these new products. There's data showing that almost four, just over 40% of students who've never used a tobacco product said they would in fact use it if offered by a friend. And one in four said that they were offered a tobacco product in the last month. So that's the reason that many communities are looking at restricting the availability of these products, so it's less likely for youth to start using them. E-cigarette products are relatively new on the market in the last 10 years. Here's a, an illustration which shows that they can come in a lot of different forms. There's e versions of all traditional smoking devices, whether it's a pipe or a cigar. But the most common are disposable e-cigarettes on the right or rechargeable e-cigarettes. Juul is a very popular, well-known product among youth. And basically, it, there's a battery in the device that heats liquid, which is usually nicotine and other chemicals, and it creates an aerosol that is inhaled by the user. And this is often called vaping products because it creates an aerosol vapor. The California Department of Public Health, like many other public health agencies, is increasingly concerned about e-cigarette use and vaping in general. And they've issued a health advisory, asking everyone to refrain from vaping any kind of product, whether it's tobacco, e-cigarettes, or cannabis. Most e-cigarettes contain nicotine, which is harmful to the developing brain, and other harmful chemicals and additives. We've seen, as I mentioned, a dramatic increase in e-cigarette use among youth. Year over year, there was a 78% increase in high school e-cigarette use. And locally, one in three teens report trying e-cigarettes in Santa Clara County, and one in seven high school students are currently e-cigarette users. Here's a graph showing what some of the other cities have done. This was in your packet. There are now three jurisdictions that have completely prohibited the sale of e-cigarette products. The county, as I mentioned, adopted it on November 5th. And Los Gatos and Morgan Hill have also adopted similar restrictions. There are four communities that are considering them, including Cupertino, Los Altos, Morg- Morgan, excuse me, Palo Alto and Saratoga are also considering similar restrictions. So that's the largest kind of substantive change in the ordinance that's before you tonight, is prohibiting the sale of e-cigarettes entirely. As I mentioned, this is an increasingly common strategy, in addition to the three communities in Santa Clara County. A number of other Bay Area and other California communities have adopted similar prohibitions. San Francisco, Contra Costa County, San Mateo County, a few cities in Alameda County. So the ordinance itself includes a number of other provisions to bring it in line with what the county adopted. You may recall that the way this program is set up is the city will adopt this program, requiring local retailers to have a license to sell tobacco, but the county will engage in an agreement with the city to administer and enforce the program. So Environmental Health will go out and do the inspections of the retailers and partner with the sheriff's office to make sure that stores aren't selling tobacco to minors. So there are a number of other minor changes in the ordinance to make sure that it's completely in alignment with what the county adopted. That will streamline enforcement on their end. So we updated definitions of some of the key terms, including what an electronic cigarette is. There's a new requirement that's part of the county ordinance, that store clerks must be 21 in order to sell tobacco, which is the current age for purchasing tobacco. And some other clarifications that the ordinance applies to both the sale and distribution of free samples. And mint and menthol weren't specifically mentioned in a prior definition, so just to make that super clear. And then there were a few changes to the hearing and appeals process for retailers if they want to dispute. A citation that they receive. And also, it increases what's known as the look-back period. So if a retailer sells tobacco to minors more than one time in a five-year period, then their penalties will increase in that period. A first violation is X number of days suspension, a second violation. It used to be a two-year period in the county ordinance, and the county's now expanded it to a five-year window so that it can take into account more violations over a longer period of time. If the council agrees to adopt the ordinance tonight, as I mentioned, the county will create a process for retailers to apply and receive the permits, renew them on an annual basis, and then go into the stores and make sure that they're not selling flavored tobacco products, and partner with the sheriff's office for decoy operations. In order to operationalize that, the, the city manager will negotiate an MOU with the county. And we've given some time in the ordinance for retailers to comply. It would not take effect until July 1st of 2020. That gives the city time to negotiate the MOU, the county time to issue the permits, and retailers time to sell down their existing inventory.
Great. And as far as outreach, we had an online survey from November to January. We received 246 responses, the large majority of them in support of an e-cigarette prohibition on the sale of e-cigarettes. And when we kind of looked at the responses in terms of who identified as a Cupertino resident, the results were pretty much the same. We also had a community meeting in December, at which residents and retailers came out to express their opinions. Some of them were in favor of the ordinance, some of them were concerned about having an e-cigarette ban, saying that prohibiting vaping was more dangerous than allowing it to happen. It was, there were also retailers that came because of the discussions we've had previously on grandfathering or not grandfathering businesses within 1,000 feet of schools. They came to express their strong opinions that they would like to be grandfathered in, and not being allowed to continue selling would be an undue burden on their business. And then as far as letters to tobacco retailers, we sent multiple letters to retailers to let them know of the upcoming potential changes. They, a lot of the retailers expressed that they felt as though the e-cigarette ban was coming, they were anticipating it. They were mostly concerned about the grandfathering. We also did some research, outreach on them being, having clerks over the age of 21, or at least the age of 21. A lot of the retailers responded that that was how they currently have practice. Some of them had to forward their letters onto their managers, but we did visit all of them, and we didn't receive any feedback other than that. And we also had a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce. So the recommended action today is conduct the first reading of the ordinance and find the proposed ordinance is exempt from CEQA.
Okay, so before we go to questions, we will go to public comment. I have four cards, Carol Baker, followed by Verena Adelweed, followed by, looks like Joan Parcel, followed by Smita Gundavajala. I'm sure I messed that up. Anyway, welcome, Carol.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. My name's Carol Baker, and I am an ambassador for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network and the Chair of the Tobacco Free Coalition of Santa Clara County. I'm here to tell you some good news, and also to tell you that I am so proud as a 60-year resident of Cupertino that my council is considering these important improvements to the ordinances. The good news is that smoking in California in general, and in Santa Clara County in particular, has been going steadily down for the last 30 years. It has gone down, down, down to the point where it's just around 10% of the, of the people that smoke. The better news is that lung cancer diagnoses are coming down at the same rate, almost parallel to the smoking cessation. And the even better news than that is that lung cancer deaths are going down again, almost parallel to those two issues. So I encourage you to go ahead with this ordinance, to do everything that you can to protect the, the health of your citizens, and particularly to keep the children from becoming one of those lung cancer diagnoses or lung cancer deaths. And that's going to happen if we allow the e-cigarette companies to continue to addict the children to nicotine, which is what they're trying to do by giving the fancy flavors that they're putting in there and everything. So thank you for, again, for considering this issue, and I encourage you to go ahead and vote it through. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have, looks like Verlina, followed by either Jan or Joan, and followed by Smita. Welcome, Verlina.
Hello, um, I just want to make it known that I'm not against anything in this, except for the fact that I don't think it should be raised the age to 21, I think it should be 18. I mean, I'm against cigarettes, I've never smoked any cigarettes, never done anything illegal, anything like that. So I totally get their point of view. But before I get into why I want it to be 18, I kind of need to tell a little about myself, just for my argument. Right now, I work at Subway. It takes me an hour and a half to get there by bus, $5 every day to go back and forth. I was in foster care, and then I came here to live with my aunt. I currently pay $400 a month rent, as well as go to school. And I recently received an opportunity to get a new job at this gas station, and I received the job, and it is really close to my house, it's better pay, it's extra money for me at the end of the month, which is a lot. It's the difference between me having toothpaste or a new toothbrush at the end of the month. So obviously, uh, but I was told that I couldn't work because this new bill will, might be passed, and I'm 18 years old. So if it goes up to 21, I, I already put in my two weeks' notice at my job, I have no job anymore, and I can't pay my rent. And some of the reasons why I think it should be 18 is because I think it should be up to the employers, the employers trust teens or adults. It should be up to their decision whether they believe a person is trustworthy and not going to sell to minors or anything like that. Also, 18-year-olds can get a tattoo, get married, join the army, they can get jury duty, they can vote, they can sign a lease, they can sue or be sued, but they can't scan a packet of cigarettes and put it in a grocery bag. And that's the only reason that I will not be able to pay my rent, is that I can't scan an item. And if it is raised, I have multiple friends who are 20, 19, and they will also be out of jobs as well. I don't know what it will have a great impact on teen smoking. I'm totally against the selling of e-cigarettes. That, that will greatly impact it, that will greatly, I think that's good, less youth will smoke, I think that's a great thing. But I just, I don't know how me, being an 18-year-old, not being able to scan a packet of cigarettes and put it in someone's grocery bag, will be able to, how that will impact teen smoking. Again, I'm an adult, I'm not a youth, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So what was the motive behind lowering the age of clerks able to sell tobacco when it's, you know, it's still going to be a legal product?
Right. Well, this is part of the County of Santa Clara's ordinance, and so it's something that the city would be required to adopt in order to continue to receive enforcement support from the Department of Environmental Health. And we talked with the county about their rationale for adopting it, and studies show that clerks who are underage are more likely to be to sell to minors because they are young as well, so their friends or other peers, they're more likely to be subject to peer pressure to sell that.
So what studies were those? You said, "Studies show."
I could get you this.
I'm always wary when I hear that, because it reminds me of a certain news network that always says, "Studies show."
The, one of the references we used were from the Public Health Law Center.
Okay. All right, next we have, I can't read it, it's either Jan or John or Joan, followed by Smita. Welcome.
It's Jan.
Okay.
I'm a 45-year resident of Cupertino, raised my girls here. The oldest one's in London now with my grandkids. And I'm also a vapor. This proposal is prohibition, which is both dangerous and unnecessary. The CDC has rescinded their warnings against nicotine e-cigarettes and announced that 100% of lung samples of confirmed valley had vitamin E acetate. They tested THC cartridges from 2018 and 2019 and determined that the ones from 18 did not have the vitamin E, but the 2019 ones did, because it was a new-to-the-market thickener that makes a low-dose THC cartridge appear to be high dose. Vitamin E is cheap compared to THC, but expensive compared to nicotine e-liquid. Nobody would add it to e-liquid because it would be like counterfeiting quarters by making them out of white gold. The FDA has clearly stated that if every smoker in the nation switched to e-cigs, it would be a huge public health benefit. Over 200,000 older Americans die every year from smoking. E-cigs could change that. Obviously, they would not say that if, obviously, the FDA would not say that if e-cigs were more dangerous than cigarettes. What is dangerous, what ruined the lungs of over 2,000 Americans and killed 56, is shadow market sales of a prohibited product. There were also a few counterfeits of legal but prohibitively taxed legal cannabis. The FDA is now frantically trying to begin their approval processes, to bring their approval price, process prices, eh, down to a level that doesn't preclude all the anti-smoking e-cig companies. And the California legislature is also working on e-cig legislation. Prohibition removes a product completely from government regulatory control and puts it into the hands of illicit market drug dealers who haunt Instagram. And we must not say to our youth that the lives of our elders don't matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have Smita, followed by Barry Chang. Welcome, Smita.
Good evening, Honorable Cupertino City Council and community members. My name is Smita Gundavajala, and I am a young person, I'm a Cupertino resident, and I also work as a program coordinator at the Youth Leadership Institute in San Mateo. I also serve as the Chair of the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition, but I'm here tonight as a resident and as a young person to speak in favor of the proposed amendments to the Cupertino Municipal Code. So through my own experiences, both in high school and college and working with young people, I've seen an explosion of e-cigarettes and other pod-based delivery systems in just the past few years. The innovation has been quick, a lot faster than the research and the public health response. And the proliferation of these devices has collectively lowered the barrier to entry for youth nicotine use. I'm not going to make arguments about e-cigarette use in general, and I'm not going to make arguments about, you know, completely banning e-cigarettes in all markets, but I think, at least in our community, understanding that the more spots there are for youth access, the greater likelihood there is that young people, even who can't legally buy the products, will somehow find, find their way to these products. I think that, there was a recent conversation with one of the young people in my youth programs that opened my eyes, and it was about a new device on the market called Puff Bar, which is a disposable vape device that offers many attractive colors, kind of like the iPhone 5C, if you can remember that, and approximately 300 puffs for the low price of $7.95. This should raise alarm and affirms why these amendments are needed. Tightening the regulations around tobacco sale and distribution will help us back down from the edge of youth addiction and premature mortality. And I think that it's difficult to deny that many of these products and their marketing and in their pricing are intentionally meant to be accessible and attractive to young people. My old high school, Manavista High School, published an article two autums ago titled "The Hidden Juul." The article confirmed what we suspected, which was that 8% of all 11th graders who are using, according to the California Healthy Kids Survey, is an undercount. The 1% of 7th graders is also an undercount, and any percentage of exposure above zero is too high for 12-year-olds. This is not normal, and this was never normal. Youth tobacco use has always been normalized by the tobacco and. Youth tobacco use has always been normalized by the tobacco industry because it is in their best financial interest to do so. Their bottom line directly conflicts with youth, youth safety and the public good. I think that what's important to remember is protecting the health of young people and community members has been and should continue to be our highest priority. I hope that we will see that there are opportunities to work with both retailers and employees to find, you know, alternative employment or ways for them to make money. But I think that if we have a decision to make, it should be in the favor of protection. I hope you'll see the promise and opportunity in these amendments to reverse the tide of youth nicotine addiction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the last card is Barry Chang. So welcome, former Mayor Chang.
Honorable Mayor and the council member, my name is Barry Chang. I always spoke last time, you know, in support of this ordinance. So I'm coming here to, again, to encourage you to pass this ordinance because this will help to, uh, the public health issue for the youngsters. So please do it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Barry Chang, and thank you for being concise. So we'll bring it back to council. Rod, would you like to go first?
Surely. Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of this, and I feel for the person who's recently taken a job. I, I would hope and believe in this economy that we have lots of businesses that would love to employ you, perhaps selling something else, like food at one of our restaurants. But I, I think, you know, we have to acknowledge that we have a public health crisis with vaping. And, you know, what we heard in our, our hearings a couple of months ago as we first took this on were, were very troubling. The, the rates of youth participation in this. And to the woman who is a vapor, I, I acknowledge that there is some evidence that shows that vaping can help people wean themselves from tobacco. But it's not altogether clear that, that vaping is a safer alternative. And we have little evidence of that. In fact, there's evidence that we could be creating a public health crisis with this, these new products and the, the composition of the chemicals that are within them that get down deep into the lungs. So there's that. And, and finally, I think it's much truer, much more often the case, that vaping is a pathway to tobacco use. I sit on the Air District Board, as I said at the beginning of this meeting, and we spend a lot of money, public's money, to try to improve human health. I think taking prudent steps to to block the sale of, of these products and make them less available to, to folks is a, is a move that is clearly in the, in the public interest. So I am in support of conforming to the county and allowing them to help us with enforcement. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Chow.
I totally agree with what Rod said. I think this ordinance only re- reduce the access to vaping products in Cupertino. Anyone who really needs these products for any adult use, you can still order online as adults, and they will, can still be delivered to home. And I, I really feel for the young lady who might lose a job. I, I would, I really wish that we can help find you a better job. And there are, there are many other ways we can help you. I think you were very articulate, eloquent, and then I think you have great future because your ability to be able to speak today and through yourself. And so I really think you have a, a great future. So that's just one job. And I, I hope that we can, um, there, there is, I would be willing to see if there are other ways we can help you. Maybe an opening in the city. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, the one thing I don't like about this ordinance is the change from 21 to 18 for employees to be able to sell a product, which, you know, whether you like the product or not, it is a legal product. However, without that, if we, if we took that out, we could not get the county to do the enforcement. We'd be doing the enforcement ourselves, and we already have, you know, not enough sheriff's deputies for the, the real crime that's occurring, like car break-ins. So I will be supporting this again.
I have no comments, other than I support the ordinance.
Hey, John.
I share the previous comments. I do see that, uh, smoking and vaping, once, once people do get into it, conceivably, it's a lifetime addiction. And so many would rather have not have started. Well, we need to, to assist based on what our community wants. And safety, health are important aspects. I really do feel for, you know, the resident that's 18 and, and the job situation. I, I want to say thank you for, for reminding us that the community is very diverse, that there are so many different situations, and we need to, to know them all. And then ultimately, we have to make the right decision for the community. So I really hope that there are good things in your future, and, and if there is something we can do, maybe a letter of recommendation or something, you know. So I think we, I need to, to support this for the community.
Okay, so we are ready to go. So I will move that ordinance number, let's see, where is this? Ordinance number 20-2197 be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof.
Second.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 20217, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, repealing and replacing Chapter 5.50 of Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations to Regulate the Sale of Tobacco Products.
Okay.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so do we have to do another one that defined it exempt from?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, to enact it.
Okay. No, to find it exempt from CEQA.
Oh, sorry, yes, you're right. First reading only.
Okay. Okay, I'm not sure how to word this, but I move that ordinance number 20-2197, the proposed actions of that ordinance are exempt from CEQA.
Second.
Motion carries unanimously.
So we don't enact tonight, right? Because that's after the second.
Right. Sorry, I misspoke.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next, item 12, Municipal Code Amendment to the Cupertino Municipal Code, Section 2.20-010 dot 010, to remove the city clerk's duty to attend each closed session of the city council and keep closed session minutes. Designate the city manager as a city employee slash official to attend each closed session of the city council and keep closed session minutes. Okay, staff report.
Yes, I just have a brief oral staff report on this item. So the, the California Government Code provides that a city may designate a city employee or official to attend each city council closed session meeting and keep a minute book of the actions taken. Currently, the Cupertino Municipal Code designates the city clerk as the employee to attend each city council meeting. But the city practice has been to have the city manager attend closed sessions, and also the city attorney and her, or her designee, with the city attorney keeping her own notes of the actions taken. From a staffing perspective, we are proposing that it's not as efficient to have the city clerk also attending those meetings. And so we are proposing to amend the municipal code to remove the city clerk's duty to attend closed sessions and keep minutes, and instead, adopt a resolution designating the city manager as the city official who would attend closed sessions and keep the official minute book. The city attorney would still attend and keep her own notes as well. The council, though, has discretion about whether they want to have an official minute book and about who would be the person to, to keep the minutes and attend the closed sessions. The proposal for you is for the city manager to do so. And the minute book would be kept in the city attorney's office and would be a confidential document.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? Rod?
I'm in support of this and the interest of efficiency. I mean, with little exception, our city attorney and city manager always attend these. And it makes sense for the city attorney to keep track of this, but I'm, I'm happy to have the city manager making the notes. But I think it's good so that when, you know, we get back together in a closed session, we, we can recall what we did the last time, or prior time.
Right. Well, the key thing about this is the city clerk would no longer attend the closed sessions.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I think that's fine.
Great, council.
It's nothing personal to our new city.
I'm sure our city clerk's thrilled not to attend those meetings. Councilmember Chow.
So I think this makes sense, but then in the event that at times, in case the city attorney couldn't attend, should we allow her designate city clerk to attend in her place?
No, it's the city manager, not the city attorney that keeps the minutes.
And the resolution does provide, as did the, does the municipal code now, that for any individual council, council closed session, the council can designate another individual to take the minutes. So let, let me rephrase that. For any specific closed session, the council can designate someone else. So if the city manager is unable to attend, or for instance, if it's like the performance review of the city manager, and you'd rather have somebody else take minutes of that, then the city, then the city council in the beginning of the closed sessions can say, "We're designating," for instance, the city attorney to.
Flexibility. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I have no comments. Darcy?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just really glad that we have a city code that governs us. I mean, I've stated in the past that it's a good idea to have an idea of what was, what was, what transpired at prior closed session meetings, because, you know, it's, it's something that would affect our, our future ability to discuss what had happened in the past and, you know, hopefully bind, you know, the people carrying out the decisions. So, yeah, I'm, I can support this. I just feel like, I, I, I'm kind of curious as to when we stop doing this, because to my knowledge, we've never actually had the city clerk in closed sessions on an, on an ongoing basis. So, yeah, no, but I pulled up the ordinance, and that is the very first part of the language, record-keeping duties, closed sessions. It shall be the duty of the city clerk to keep an accurate record of the proceedings of the city council. And that's, you know, under closed sessions, so. Yeah, I, I hope going forward that we do, do what was, you know, kind of identified in the municipal code longstanding. And, you know, what we, I think, pointed out previously would be a good idea. Thanks.
John, anything?
Just that, I think it's a, a good choi- choice. Thank you.
Okay, great. So can somebody make a motion here?
So I move to approve ordinance number 20-2198, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending City Code Section 2.2010, 010, Record Keeping Duties, Closed Sessions of Chapter 2.20, City Clerk to Title II, Administration Personnel to Remove the City Clerk's Duty to Attend City Council Closed Sessions and Keep Minutes.
Okay, second.
So I move.
Wait, wait, you have to vote Leon.
Oh.
Okay.
Motion carries unanimously.
Then I move to adopt Resolution Number 20-014, a resolution of the Cupertino City Council Designating the City Manager as the City Employee.
Excuse me, sorry, I haven't actually conducted the first reading.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we need to do the first reading. Okay.
Okay. This is the first reading of ordinance number 20-2198, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending City Code Section 2.20.010, Record Keeping Duties, Closed Sessions of Chapter 2.20, City Clerk to Title II, Administration and Personnel to Remove the City Clerk's Duty to Attend City Council Closed Sessions and Keep Minutes.
Okay, second. Wait. Do we have to vote on that again now, or?
No.
No, okay. All right.
You read a lot better.
But now you, but now you.
Now you can adopt the resolution.
Okay, I move to adopt Resolution Number 20-014, a resolution of the Cupertino City Council Designating the City Manager as the City Employee Officer to Attend City Council Closed Sessions and Keep Minutes.
Second, vote. Rod, okay.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. So is anyone recusing themselves on this next item?
I'm recusing. I'll speak in public comments.
Okay, it's item 13. It is everyone's favorite subject, weeds. So this is a hearing regarding abatement of public nuisance from.
Wasn't that the last subject? No, no, I'm sorry, it was tobacco.
Oh.
That was supposed to be a joke. I'm sorry.
Right, okay. Not funny. "From weeds or other fire hazards pursuant to provisions of Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 9.08, and Resolution Number 19-141, Hearing for Impacted Property Owners to Contest the Matter of Proposed Abatement." And this item is continued from January 1st, 21st, 2020. I don't think we need another staff report. That has not changed, has it?
It's the same. I, I thought it might be helpful to provide, just again, a summary of the legal standard that we're considering here. So the, in the previous action, the council declared that these properties on the attached, the list attached to the draft resolution were potential nuisances. And under the Cupertino Municipal Code, I just wanted to focus a little bit on the definition of weeds and what it provides. So the, it defines nuisance weeds and says that "No owner shall permit weeds to remain on their property." And weeds are defined to include weeds that may attain such large growth as to become a fire menace to adjacent property. And so even if weeds are not currently a large growth to be a menace, if this, if the council finds that they may become so, then it could be a nuisance. And the resolution now is declaring that there are these weeds, which may become a hazard, on private property, and would declare those weeds to become a nuisance and order the, the county agricultural commissioner to give notice that unless the nuisance is abated, the, then the county agriculture commissioner can go in and abate it himself. And then this hearing is to have objections to the proposed removal of those weeds, either by the property owners or the agricultural commissioner.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, so before we discuss that here, I have four cards. Leon Chow, followed by. Liang Chow, followed by Jeremy Edberg, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Barry Chang. What? Oh, I'm sorry. Mo, would you like to speak? Thank you for waiting so patiently.
You're welcome. My name is Mo Cemery. I'm the weed abatement manager for Santa Clara County. I wanted to come up before we got into the public hearing portion to update on the three parcels that were contested in the last meeting. I'd like to start with parcel number 37516004. This parcel has come up a couple of times. What we've learned since that last meeting was one of the major problems on the property had to do with palm trees and low-hanging palm fronds. The city has informed me that those trees actually belong to the city and not to the property owner, and that they will, the city will be addressing those issues for the trees. Most of the other conditions on that particular property have been addressed, so we would recommend removing that property from.
So which address is that?
That would be.
Menard?
The one on Menhart.
Okay.
So does that mean we get to put ourselves on the list?
I beg your pardon?
Does that mean we get to put the city Cupertino on the list?
They've promised to take care of that before the season starts, so I don't think it'll be necessary.
Just asking. Fair is fair, right?
I'll, I'll put your name on that one.
Actually, councilmember, since the rules and regulations under which we operate only permit us to work with privately owned properties, public properties are under a different set of guidelines.
I, I was serious enough, so I actually appreciate the clarification. Thank you, Mo.
The second one I'd like to mention is property 32641032, which is at 10490 Castine. That property, as I had stated in the previous meeting, was, did not have a significant threat according to the photographic evidence that was provided, and we would recommend that it be removed from the list. And then the third item, which I believe the property owner will speak again today, was property, was property number 31621049, and that was 10174 McLaren. That property, at the time of the inspection, had two significant issues that created a fire hazard. High grass close to the home and low-hanging branches from the trees into that same grass. The tree has been trimmed back and probably isn't a significant hazard at this point. However, the grasses are annual recurring weeds, and with their proximity to the structure, we feel it would be appropriate to leave it on the list at this point.
Okay, I, I had one question on the list here for 10490 Castine. How come it says the city is San Jose? So.
That's the mailing address for the property.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry. Okay, now I got it. Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else?
I'm prepared to answer any questions.
All right, well, here are the public, the speaker cards first. We may call you back. Liang Chow, followed by Jeremy Edberg, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Liang Chow.
Hello, hi. So I'm speaking for myself, and this photo on top was, I took that December 2nd. There were grass there, and I have hired a gardener to clean that up. And also, this is a photo of the forefront side on the, so as Mo mentioned, the low-hanging branch has been cleaned up, and this area, actually our front yard and backyard, all in, are in pretty shady areas. So the likelihood of causing fire hazard is very low. And, and I've lived in Cupertino for 20 years, so this property has been maintained for 20 years, and for this one year that we have not maintained it well. So I'd like to point out that, this is from the county website, the Weed Abatement Program has a mission. The mission is to reduce fire hazard, and the goal.
Can that be focused, please?
So the goal is, how do I, how do I focus that?
Oh, hold on. All right, there we go.
So this is a mission statement, and the goal is voluntary compliance. The goal is not punitive punishment, and I have voluntarily complied with the requirement. And I have learned that, the standard. And also, I think another goal is education, and I think that purpose has been achieved. And this is another page about the bait, how the process works. The process is, yes, the county identify the properties, however, it's the jurisdiction that should adopt resolution, and it's required to have a public hearing so that residents can come and contest and show that they're, show their compliance. And as Mo has done for the city, for the property, for the, the city promised to cut back on the tree, and that property would be removed. I think this is the intent of the program, is to allow people to come, speak in front of the council, so that the council makes decision to remove properties from the list. And it is fair because people who speak, who decide to come and speak, and people who decide not to come shouldn't be treated equally. People who come and speak, their comments should not be ignored. Also, if a property was put on the list, it will be put on for three years. Then we are wasting county staff time and dollars for inspection for three years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Jeremy Edberg, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Barry Chang. Welcome, Jeremy.
Thank you. Originally, I had something else planned, but I had a chance to speak to Mo during the break, and he actually addressed most of my issues. So the only one I wanted to bring up was, my only concern about this whole program was that I never got any sort of notice or warning. My first warning was, you're in the program, and here's your fee from the county. And so when I brought that up to him, he said that he would love to give warnings but doesn't have the budget to do so. So I would like to propose to the council that you amend the resolution or make a second one that gives Mo and his office the budget to actually give warnings, to do inspections for warnings. As soon as I got the notice, of course, I was in compliance, and so I agree with Liang that, you know, we should, the, the mission is education and voluntary compliance, and I've done all those things. So if you agree with her, then I'd like to be removed from the list too. But otherwise, I'd like to just propose that you give him more budget to make warnings so that people don't have to be immediately penalized for not knowing that they weren't in compliance.
What was your address?
Oh, it's the, I think, third one on the list, 19641 Drake Drive. It's listed under Young Cathy, and I think it cuts off after that. That's my wife. Yes.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, next is Peggy Griffin, followed by Barry Chang. Peggy is no longer here, so next is Barry Chang. Welcome, former mayor Chang.
Honorable mayor and councilmember, my property is also on the list, but I'm not here to ask you to recuse myself, okay, or take my, my property off the list. I did the same way of what I did many, many years, you know, since I owned this property over 20 years, but I don't know why my property was on the list last year, and then we paid 750 before I came over here, this my wife told me. But it's okay, because for the safety of the entire county, I will continue to, to follow the, the rule according to Mo for three years, then my property will be off the list. So I, but my recommendation, please don't give special treatment for the council member. That's not right. No one should be escorted from the law. Everybody has to obey the law. And I'm willing to do it, and as I say, my is on the property on the list, and then I'm, we pay the fine, and we'll continue to what we have done before. I will communicate with Mo to see what I can do to make sure that will be off the list, because we do keep the property clean. Every year, we hire someone to, to cut the, cut the grass, because we are on the hillside, and my property has 2.14 acres, so it's fairly big. But I'm willing to stay on the list. I ask you, don't make any exception to, no one should be above the law. If this is a city ordinance or the county ordinance, everybody has to follow, including me. So that's what I'm trying to tell you. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Barry. Mo, I had one other question of you before I go to the last card. So at the last meeting, when we went through the properties, you said one should never have been on the list, so that's taken off. And then another one is taken off because it's the city's trees, but I think for McLaren, you mentioned it could have gone either way. Do you recall saying that, or should we play the, look at the video?
I, I was asked very specifically on this property if I would have removed it, and my answer was no. My consideration was, would I have even considered it had it been anybody else? And the answer is no, I would have left it on the program for the reasons I said today. This is recurring grasses that are close to a structure. That particular structure, when I looked at it on our overhead mapping, is only 22 feet from the next structure. So if it were to catch fire, there's, very easily could be a chain reaction from one property to the next. So it's my opinion, based on our experiences, that no, I wouldn't have removed that one. I don't think that could go either way. And I've had an opportunity to review all of the inspection information and speak with the inspector that did that particular property, and I, I think I've, I've solidified my, my opinion even more since then.
Okay. I, I mean, I don't want to give special treatment to anyone on the council, but I don't want to penalize them for being on the council either.
I agree.
Okay, so thank you. The last card I have is Jean Bedord.
Thank you, council. It seems like you've spent an awful lot of time this last year on weed abatement. I think this is the sixth time it's come up in the last year. I'd like to share with you a comment from one of my neighbors. We noted with disbelief and dismay that requests to examine several properties from weed abatement responsibilities were being considered. In an era of increased fire hazard and the resulting personal loss and economic devastation that have ravaged many of our communities, it is simply inconceivable that Cupertino would give exemptions for this basic aspect of home ownership and responsibility to the Cupertino community. We strongly urge the council to do the right thing and hold all property owners responsible for abiding by our city codes and the Santa Clara County Fire Department guidelines. Allowing exemptions for this critical fire prevention responsibility would be wrong, would endanger the community at large, and as such, be a black mark on the council's safety voting record. I happen to agree with former mayor Barry Chang, who was on the list, and also Richard Loenthal, a former mayor, who was on the list. Neither one of them asked for personal exemptions. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
So, well, was that neighbor not wanting the exemptions for the people that should not have been on the list, or, I mean, because Mo now has said two of the three that applied should be exempt in his view, but it sounds like from what you're saying, they shouldn't be.
I understood that they should be kept on the list, not removed.
Okay.
I mean, he has a list based on professional examination of these properties, and they should be on the list.
No, so, Mo, I thought you said Castine and Drake should be off the list. Now I'm getting a little bit confused here.
It was Castine and Menhart.
Menhart, sorry, yeah.
Menhart had issues that have been resolved. One of the significant issues had to do with trees that belonged to the city. The city contacted me and informed me that they would be taking care of those issues very quickly. The other property, the Castine, was an issue in which I believe, after reviewing it, that my inspector was a little overzealous as a new inspector, and added a property that, had I looked at it, wouldn't have even been considered.
Okay, very good.
And, Mo, what about the comment from the, the speaker that he'd like to see a warning system put in place? Is that something that was accurate reflection of what you're saying, that, you know, but for a budget, you don't have a warning system? Or is this whole thing set up without a warning system for a particular reason? And if we could put in a warning system, is that within the purview of the city to decide to do that for a countywide program?
Well, the, there's a couple of issues you can look at as to a warning system. Number one is the fact that we are a cost recovery program. We do not receive general fund monies from you or the county, from anyone. We have to recover the cost for the work that we do. So when a property has been found to be non-compliant during the fire season, we send them a notice informing them that they're non-compliant and that they'll be added to our monitoring program so that when we go back to monitor them for the next few years, we can actually get paid for that, for that work that we do. The other side of that is also looking at the fact that the, these are ordinances and regulations that exist, and like with speeding or parking illegally, you don't normally get a warning. If you did it, that's, you violated the regulation. You're supposed to know what those regulations are. If I had the resources to be able to do warnings, it's not, it wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing, but I, I would be working for free, basically.
Okay. Or you'd have to cost recover from a much smaller base of folks in the program.
Say that again, please?
You'd have to cost recover from a much smaller base of people than.
Actually, it would be impossible to cost recover because I can't transfer those, those charges to anyone else. That's very specific in California law.
Well, a warning system would increase your work, but it would almost inevitably diminish your revenues.
Oh, again, it would diminish the revenues, and I cannot pass that cost to another property owner, as county council has explained it to me.
So, so really, I mean, in effect, this hearing serves as the warning system. I mean, throughout this process, you've identified a couple of properties, in your opinion now, that were originally on the list, but could be removed in our hearing today, in your opinion, without any kind of adverse effect on the purpose of the system, which is to help alleviate fire hazards?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
So at our hearing, was it in the summer, the one, whatever it was, a hearing last year, we also exempted the same property on Barnhart.
Menhart.
Menhart, excuse me, Menhart, thank you. But ultimately, you cost recovered from the property. Who did you do that from?
Actually, we didn't cost recover from the property.
You had to, but you, did you charge the city of Cupertino?
Actually, it was a few years ago, we had a hearing in which several people came in and were. in which several people came in and were given a break on the fees because they had waited like this late in the evening. And we did then recover from the city. The agricultural commissioner contacted the city manager and explained that you dismissed those fees for convenience, not for cause, and that we had to recover those costs.
So if we can, if we take an action for convenience rather than cause, and, I mean, frankly, it seems like you are the arbiter, right? At least to me. You're the professional doing this work. You make a determination. And then we either ratify, or we can, for convenience, I guess is the legal term, say, no, you don't have to. And in which case, then the city becomes responsible for payment. Is that correct?
If it's for convenience, if it's for cause, you feel that we have done something inappropriately, then that would be, we would just have to eat that cost.
And I would just emphasize that is the city council's determination what to deem these properties a nuisance or not. What might have happened last time is they found, they just decided they weren't required to pay the fee without making the finding that they're not a nuisance. But it's still within the city's discretion to determine whether the weeds are a nuisance or not. And I would not say that's a convenience determination.
Right. So if we determine they're not a nuisance, then the county could not recover that $80 a year?
Can I clarify that in particular case? That was actually, as council member Sink pointed out, that was a summer hearing, which is the hearing for recovering of the actual fees for the work we had done during the season.
Okay.
This is prior to us doing any of that work.
Okay. Of course, there are costs associated with us discussing this for hours and hours as well.
And I think the city manager also wanted to point out that the city has been doing increased efforts to make residents aware that it's the fire season in time to abate weeds so that before the county goes out to inspect the properties, there's been some public outreach to let people know their responsibility to clear their properties.
In a general form, if it's not by address or anything like that, and one of those public forums could be, or public ways of communicating our, you know, items of interest in the scene and anything else that goes out to individual households.
All right. Council member Willie, do you have anything?
I agree that fire hazard needs to be taken seriously. And I also feel we need to be understanding to our community. The fact that there's not a warning in place, I think we need to be aware of that. Surprise, surprise, somebody's on the list, they're being fined. It was discussed that there's no warning with speeding. Oh, yes, there is. You take the test and you pass or fail. And you know or you don't know what the speed limits are. And there are signs on every street. This is a 25 zone, this is a 35 zone, this is a 60 zone. There is no warning on what's acceptable weeds or not acceptable weeds. It's more or less a surprise. Yes, it's a fire hazard. By all means, I commend Mo and his team, identify places. And if there is no warning, then they get the notification. If they do their cleanup that they need to do, and they come here and are demonstrating to us, I think we need to be understanding and move on. Should we spend as much time on weeds as we do? No, I think it should be pretty straightforward. There's been no warning. Residents, have you cleaned it up? Are you here to show us the pictures that it is cleaned up, and we can take an appropriate action? And if you, if you haven't, then we have no choice but to grant the fine and move on, so...
There's no more discussion?
Well, I would like to discuss this.
Sure, okay. I thought you already went. Okay.
I ask a question. I spoke in between these council meetings with Julie Linney, who's deputy chief of fire prevention for the county. I said, is this a, is this program, which is run by another office of the county, you know, really a fire prevention program? Or is this just a landscaping beautification method that we have? And she was insistent that it was, it was vital to our fire protection. I think it's very notable that former mayors understand we should treat everyone fairly under the system. We may not like the system when it applies to us, but I think fairness is a basic, is a basic principle here. And I appreciate Barry Chang, former mayor Barry Chang, coming tonight. I also appreciate former mayor Richard Lowenthal weighing in an email to us. And I'll just note what it says here. "Honorable council members, we're on your list of folks with weeds that need abatement. It's the property we're donating to the city to create a trail from McLaren Ranch to Linda Vista Park. We are happy to pay the abatement fees and do not want an exemption. It seems that if other residents have to pay it, we should too." So I've been consistent since I joined this council at the end of 2011, and I support equitable treatment for all. So I would move that we, based on the recommendation of our professional, his assessment, remove a Barnhart and direct the city to...
Not Barnhart, Menhart.
Menhart, thank you. To direct the city to expeditiously repair the trees, fix the trees accordingly. Also, based on the professional's assessment, take Castine off the list and then accept all of the rest of the properties into the, into the program and be on the list. Thank you.
So that was your motion?
That's my motion.
All right, I will second that. Whoa, okay.
The motion carries with council member Chow absent.
Wonderful. That's the end of our weeds for this year, hopefully. So council member Chow can return. Thank you, Mo, for coming and staying so late.
Mayor, this time I'm going to excuse myself. I have a very early morning tomorrow.
Okay, very good. We are on to council and staff comments and future agenda items. Maybe the staff can go first this time, so I don't forget them.
I don't know if you mentioned this before, but I attended the West Valley Mayors and Managers Meeting where we set the 2020 kind of calendar of discussions for the topics. I also attended the New Mayors and Council Members Academy from January 23rd to the 24th. There was a housing forum in Mountain View on the 29th of January that I attended with the mayor and council member Chow. I made a Sacramento trip on, I forget which day that was, Sacramento trip to talk about the budget request that I'm submitting for affordable housing. There was the first NASA talk in the series a couple of weeks ago, which went very well, full attendance at 75. And one other announcement. Well, no, that's all I have. That's all I have, sorry.
Okay, council member Sinkz.
I have nothing further.
Council member Chow.
Oh, yeah, I forgot I attended the housing forum with the League of Cities. And also, on the 23rd, I attended the League of Cities Legislative Committee on Environmental Quality. Because I was selected as the president designated for that committee. And this committee reviews bills that's related to environmental quality. I think, sorry, there was, some cities actually received warning letters about noncompliance of certain environmental bill. But then, sorry, I need to get more detail on that because they, many cities said they are, they were surprised by this letter. Okay, yeah, sorry.
Okay. I also attended the West Valley Mayors Meeting, attended the final event at Enzo's before sadly they closed. Let's see, I, last night, I attended the Hong Kong Trade Council Lunar Neer Event on the 29th. I also went to the housing forum, and I attended the State of the City. Oh, yeah, obviously. I think that's all I have. Council member Willie.
So I also went to Enzo's closing. It's my understanding they're not closed yet. They had two weeks, which means...
They're closed.
Okay. And then the State of the City with Mayor Sharf. The sister cities had a potluck with all four sister cities. Attended that. And the Education Fair at Community Center.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, hold on, I got to get the gavel. There's actually not a lot of room up here, first off. Okay, thank you, everyone.